Board Policy Series 303.
Okay, so I shared with you some highlighted documents and that is essentially just to clarify some language. So if we look at 30303, you know, the title of the policy is Principal Contract and Contract Renewal and then throughout the document I just replaced administrative with the word administrative with principal, just so it coordinates with the title on it. Otherwise, the rest of the language, I believe, is appropriate.
You got it.
Same on, well, on 30305, I do not know where I'm starting. 30306. On 30306, I did the same thing, but I struck that last line in that first paragraph. The administrator to evaluate shall be observed for a period of time equal to a full instructional period. Well, principals don't really have instructional periods and so I don't, you know, to evaluate them, I don't follow them around for a certain amount of time. You know, the evaluation is just basically, you know, throughout the general, you know, process of interaction and basic observation. So that line doesn't need to be in there. That's in there for principals evaluating teachers. That's part of the law. So that's 30306. And then 30309, same thing. I just replace administrative with principal. It just coordinates with the title. That would be the only changes in the 303 series that I would recommend.
Those other pages, we don't have yet. We just have 3033.
There's only three 303s.
Right.
Sorry.
You were gonna make changes on the other two, but we don't have those.
The 30305, correct. I don't have a copy of that because I don't have any changes. So I don't have a copy with any highlights.
Just write down 306.
That is correct. But on 30305, it uses the word principal, I noticed throughout. So I don't have any recommended language changes on 30305. So that's why I didn't give you a copy of that.
Correct. Well, obviously, if you didn't give us a copy of 306, neither would you have.
You didn't get it? You should've got a highlighted.
We had all three of them.
Look in your folder. I'm sorry, Mike. I put it in the back of your folder along with some other documents. Yeah.
309, all the highlighted stuff.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. So in the front of your packet were your new policies approved last month and in the back of your packet were necessary documents for this meeting. And that, yeah, so that's kind of a new, a new procedure.
All right.
So this requires no action? Well, yeah, it does. There's a change. Sorry. So I don't have a, I don't have it as an action item, so I don't have a language for it to use, but we just need to approve the 303 series as read, the changes as read.
I'll make a motion to approve the 303 series with the changes as read. Second. Number first and second, myself, yes, Tim?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Okay, now we're gonna continue on with action items. Number 12, discuss and take possible action on lunch prices for the 2019, 2020 school year.
So lunch prices were left unchanged going into this year. You can see the trend on your menu, in your packet and sheeted list is number 12. So you can see your lunch price trends and you can see they were left completely unchanged last year. I mean, and that's, you can continue to do that. Department of Ed wants us to raise our lunch prices, particularly for adult lunches. They think our adult lunches are too low, but don't have to, but.
What is the ratio? I mean, adults get a lot more food compared to the high school kids that they wouldn't need to pay for?
We don't, how many adult lunches do we serve? How many adult meals do we serve? I mean, of course, Patsy would know that better, but I mean.
Not, uh, parent lunches, not that many.
Yeah, parent and teacher, teacher pay.
Teachers, you know.
It's nothing, it's not real dramatic that all of a sudden, it's like a massive buffet just for the adults compared to kids.
I would guess most of the high school kids would eat more than that.
So, I mean, I don't necessarily have a recommendation. Should, or should, it's entirely against the law, just.
If you look at the history, we've been gone up every year, every second, we've been here for two years. It's like every, every two years, yeah. So you talked earlier today about being self-sufficient. Are we close to that?
Yeah. Yeah. As you can tell, our budget calendar is comfortable, so it might be a significant increase to pay bills.
And we have not, we've budgeted for $20,000 for the general fund share. We have not transferred that into the lunch fund. We're still seeking $17,000.
So the only reason to raise the prices would be as if we were gonna raise the expense.
Yeah, and I don't know that we anticipate that, Linda, do we? I mean, again, that's putting you on the spot a little bit, but, yeah.
Probably, you know, with commodities and stuff, it kind of, it's pretty usable as far as what we're doing now.
Yeah. Food prices, that one's.
We're not anticipating a spike in commodities.
Well, I don't know now with, you know, like fruits and vegetables and stuff might probably go up some because you're gonna have some stuff coming up that's gonna probably be more expensive. But.
I know you have a bad idea to try to stay ahead of it, but, you know, I don't know. We're, we're close to 50% free and reduced and so, you know, it's, it's just a little over half our population can see any effect. If you were to go up in, for example, like what you'd be, you know, 25 cents a lunch, or 25 cents a week. If you're just eating lunch, you don't serve a whole lot of breakfast.
We have the $17,000 plus another $20,000.
We choose to, to reduce $20,000.
We need, we need, we need.
We don't have, we just have, if we need to, it's just kind of.
What I'm saying, if it starts to run to red, we've got money there to.
Well, they make, they do make you change a die form that I've just filled out recently is that on your October magazine, your zero or negative, we have 20, so we're zero or one. Zero or negative, if you have a negative balance in lunch fund, we have to pay for that, so.
Can we only do this at this time of year, 23, at any time?
Well, you want to do it before school starts.
So we shouldn't have to take any action if we don't make any change. Okay, number 13, discuss and take possible action on revision to board policy 203.06, board committees.
Okay, on this one, there was some significant changes with the Americanism Committee. I shared some of that with you. Now it's called the Committee on American Civics. So, you know, that's essentially everything listed, you know, when it starts to be identified, number one through eight on page two. You know, so for example, first one, we'll go through the two public meetings annually. This committee has the whole, you know, we have it. I mean, they're just holding the faith in the flair a little more, making sure that we're patriotic and that we're making sure that our curriculum is, is solid with regard to American civics. And that's a good thing.
Yeah. So what does this go into affect this next school year? We've got our committee set up and I don't know, we even have three people in it. Do we have a champion? It says on here, you have to have three people.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're right. Well, that just simply you appoint one more right now, or?
I don't know for sure how many we have on there. We have to add.
Yeah, I have to go back to my table.
Do that next month, right?
Yeah.
All these other recommendations are pretty much B of F as far as what we're teaching.
Oh, yeah.
Anybody else on it? There's two, there's two on there. And I'm also supposed to nominate a major leader of each committee. So I just have people in the committee. So I don't know if I have to change that or this score out or if we can wait till next time. Okay, number 14, discuss and take possible, possible action on revision to board policy 502.01, residents' students. What kind of action can we take? Because we can't change the policy.
I need a, I need a motion action on number 13.
But again, what action? We cannot take any action against it. It has to be what it is. We can't change it.
Well, I know, but you just, you have to approve the revisions. Your, this policy is changing. I mean, you're right, it's banned. But this language, this language comes from the law. If we were to subscribe to another policy service, this language would be different. So KSB's policy on board committees could be slightly different. Just nuanced different, but the mandates from the law are gonna be in policy.
Yeah, I thought this came straight from the state.
Yeah, but even if they do, it's still appropriate to take board action to accept it when, you know, if you don't, you run at risk of liability.
All right.
So just need a, yeah, we'll need a motion on, on each policy starting on 13.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve revisions to policy number 203.06, board committees. Second, Kristen?
Yes.
Self, yes, Tim?
Yes.
Trent? Number 14, discuss and take possible action on revision to board policy 502.01, residents' students.
And this includes a lot of information about children of military backgrounds and making sure that they are protected status as well. So the third paragraph is all new in this policy, as is the last sentence of the fourth paragraph.
So under what situation do you charge tuition for a public school student?
Only for something, only for something extraordinary beyond. So for example, a kid that takes a particular woods class and they have to pay for their materials, is that tuition for that class? Not really, wouldn't really, you'd call that just expense. That expense.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve revisions to policy 502.01, residents' students.
First and second, myself, yes, Kristen?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
15, discuss and take possible action on revision to board policy 507.02, student directory information.
Okay, in this one, as it adds that we have to provide, would we provide information to college recruiters? We also have to provide that information to military, so it just, it includes them as a group that it's safe to share student information with.
So like just programs for sporting events, do you have to get permission with their names? It talks about weight and height and stuff. Do you have to get permission from every parent? You can't?
We haven't, we never had anybody concerned about that. You could, the only thing we ask parents to sign for these sports is to use their child's likeness in a public social, social media with a stamp. But if you go out for a sport, you assume and accept that you could be caught in a picture playing basketball and that can be published. But to take a picture in a classroom of the kids doing something and push it out on social media, maybe, those are things that you have to be a little more careful about. To my knowledge in three years, I haven't had anybody that has said, I don't want my, my student to go through anything like that.
Good. Would you like to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve revisions to policy 507.02, student directory information.
Motion second. Kristen?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Yourself, yes, motion carries. Number 16, discuss and take possible action on revision to board policy 702.03, budget adoption process.
Okay, everything from the second paragraph through the number four, that's all new language. So they're just getting quite a bit more intricate and detailed in the budget adoption. You really won't notice anything. Most of this is what I have to do. You'll notice, you won't notice anything different really from our process in our committee work or during your budget hearing or the passing of the budget. But there, there is some language that I'll need some help with and our, you know, attorneys will be sharing this at Administrator Days and such, you know, the interpretation of number three and the assessed value and total taxes assumed through the levy. So I don't, you know, I don't necessarily understand it. Probably like a lot of super tenants will get some legal advice on exactly how that works and we'll get that.
You usually show that on your slide show. I think we have all that.
Yeah. Yeah. But there's an, it's an attempt to curb tax asking and also to address spikes in assessment, which that would have been there 10 years ago, not because we don't see that. We were having the correction. So like any year when you have new laws, new policy, we need folks to tell us what it means to the service. This will be one of them.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve revisions to policy 702.03, budget adoption process. Tim? No, I'm sorry, a second. Tim? Trent?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Number 17, discuss and take possible action on revision to board policy 706.01, purchasing procedures.
Okay, so this identifies that the board can enter the multi-year contract for a period of expectancy, seven years. So if you were to say, we're gonna have a 10-year contract with our waste disposal, well, you can't do it. It can't be beyond seven years, which is just, so, so that's, that's like, that's one board holding future boards to, you know, previous decisions, which they, which they can change unless there'd be some penalty in the contract, severance of the contract. And then also on this, and they had a mistake and I had to bring it to their attention, that $40,000 is $100,000. It used to be $40,000. So that's $100,000. And then the line, you know, superintendent will have the authority to authorize purchases costing under, and ours is $5,000. They, districts can set whatever they want on that. Ours just happens to be set at $5,000, which is a, is a board decision. So there will be $5,000 in that line on that fourth paragraph. And then essentially, yes, it's just, you can't enter a multi-year contract beyond seven years.
So we have to amend this $100,000 in our motion?
No, I don't. Because I've got it written in there. You'll get a fresh copy and that'll show 100 and that'll show 5,000 above it.
Any comments on that? It's a lot of money.
What, $5,000, $100,000?
Either way, either way.
So when, when you do the bids that are less than $100,000, like from $20,000 to $100,000, how do, how do you deal with those? You just put out a voiced bid and then?
Yeah.
Then they're not sealed and then you just bring them?
Yeah, if we want, if we wanted to solicit bids, I mean, it's as simple as, you know, usually you push those out to contract, reputable contractors that, you know, you don't necessarily just advertise in a paper, which they file and then we'll see. Or you just say, hey, we, you send it directly to a contract contractor and say, we want you to bid on this. So, and then that can be done in a number of different ways, but usually just a sealed bid. We've done that a couple of times.
So when, or maybe it's just changed. Well, we got our bids from that factory. You know, it says you have to take the lowest bid. Well, we didn't just take the lowest bid. We had two of them come in and give their sales pitch and then we chose. So is that different now? Or did we do that? Possibly wrong.
No.
Possible. I mean, otherwise, why would you even have them come in to the sales pitch after they gave you a bid? If you have to take the lowest bid. He says responsible bidder.
Lowest responsible bidder.
Yeah. But if you have them both come in. So if somebody's gonna show, you don't like the responsible one.
I think Trent's right there. I mean, I think that, that gives you, obviously, they want you to take the lowest bid that has the taxpayers, but you, but also, you know, it's gotta be somebody who's reputable.
But you would have them come speak and give their.
Well, I don't see.
I didn't think they were really, but, I mean, I just looking at the fine print here and wondering if you have options.
I would say you have options. Or you just basically deem a, if you think the lowest one isn't good, you just deem them unresponsible.
Do we change that? Do, I mean, or is that set stone by the legislature?
Was that the lowest responsible bid? I don't think that's in statute.
Oh, you don't?
I, I, you know, I don't know, but I, I, I would take that.
Can we check? I mean, can we check on that and see if?
Yeah, I mean, I can if you want.
If we want to rework that so that we don't.
Yeah. So you could have a contractor come here and say, hey, your policy says you have to take the lost bid. That's me. You didn't take.
You could say, you didn't finish your last five jobs. I, whatever. I mean, I, I could check on that. Just satisfy curiosity. Is it beyond this? It's a, curious. Yeah. Our, our policy service guy actually sent, he sent a little bit of detail about some of the changes and he doesn't address that. Of course, that's not a change. So I'll check into that. Let's just, yeah, that's, I'll, I'll include it on next month's agenda.
Okay, number 18, discuss and take possible action on revision to board policy 407.50 and replace it with 407.07, certificated employee negotiations.
407.07. So here's the deal. We can now enter in a collective bargaining agreement for four years. Don't know if you want to, because things can change dramatically. I don't think you want to be locked in for four years, but.
What do you think about that?
Two. We've generally done two. They've agreed to two. Boards agreed to two. But now you can go up to four. So I, you know, there, it could go both ways. It could work to either side's benefit. It's just, you know, if you want to only experience the negotiating process once every four years versus once every, every other year, which we have that coming up this fall.
Kind of depends on whether you want to be the school that all the other schools look at and say, hey, that school's given this, you know, that's what we want, or we want more. Or, hell, you want to look at a different school and say, hey, that school only gave them that, you know, instead of what you want. You can be the one that they compare to, or you can look to compare to somebody else. But that's to be decided in negotiation.
Yeah. But it provides a timeline. I mean, if you look at 407.50, 407.50 is two sentences long. This obviously is very wordy and it, it lays out the specific timeline, which is nice once you're set up.
That's not in the only cost. Cause I, I've read that. That must be a different.
It's just in regulation books. So it's good. I mean, it just puts it in policy for you rather than you've got a policy and then you've also got a reg book somewhere else.
No more questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion and we approve revisions to policy 407.50, certified employee negotiations.
I'll second. Kristen?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Yeah, myself.
Yes, motion carries. Number 19, discuss and take possible action on co-op and cross-country slash girls golf.
Okay, I, I guess, you know, as I shared with you last month, you know, we, we have a situation and where we have just one girl that came to the information, came to the interest meeting. So there's, there's that thought right there, is do you offer a program for one person? I gave you our, our girls' golf schedule, okay? If we have girls' golf and we have only one girl, we're not gonna follow that schedule. We're not gonna make this young lady who's a novice golfer, put her through that schedule. Be miserable. She just, for the most part, I think, wants to learn how to play golf. She doesn't want to go and get up early and go compete in cold, freezing, windy weather, whatever the case may want to be. She'll be a freshman, or, yes, she'll be a freshman. So we're talking about Marlena. She should, so if Marlena wants to play golf, gosh, we sure want to afford her that opportunity. But you have to decide if that's a wise use of district funds. But then what I do know is if we do it, we're not gonna do this schedule because that's not what she needs. But that's all, that's kind of administrative decision later on. So I had even, I had checked with, you know, even before this year with, because our numbers have been kind of low for girls' golf in particular and we haven't been able to score as a team. And so I had checked with Mr. Reed and asked him to check with Randy Clement at Creighton, who used, who practices at our course. For the most part, their course has some water issues and so they, they practiced at our course. And from what I understand, Creighton hasn't offered girls, their girls play golf with the boys, which they can do in the spring. But if you offer a specific program just for girls, that's in the fall, just for girls. And so, and they haven't. And so I thought, maybe if they're interested in doing that, maybe, maybe we can come together on that. So I've asked him to check into that before and so, so here we are again, maybe to readdress it. So, and then as I shared with you, you know, we're still without a cross-country coach. We could assign somebody. We sure could do that. Our numbers are low there too, but, you know, that's a, you know, a program we definitely need to sustain and maintain. But the folks that we hired this year, none of them came in with expertise or interest in that. We don't have any of our staff that came and said, hey, Dr. Al, the cross-country area coach, everyone's up, you know, I'd sure like to be assigned to that. I've visited with a couple of folks and they're like, gee, I really hope you don't assign me to that. But we could, as you know. So, Mr. Reed said, you know, Dr. Al, Creighton's got an excellent coach over there and, you know, maybe we could co-op cross-country and girls' golf. And we've got a golf coach, they've got a cross-country coach. Well, okay, let's have that conversation. So as I shared with you in the packet, I did with Mr. Thompson and Mr. Clement and they shared with me that they don't think they have any girls' interest for golf. I'd sure be happy to have, to entertain a co-op in cross-country. I'd sure be happy to have, to entertain a co-op in cross-country. And we use the word co-op and this is an absorption. It's a, uh, it's a, you know, a cooperative agreement with the things that both sides would expect, uh, to go with that. So, um, I guess that's something to consider from what I understand. Or well, what I know is a week ago, last night, Creighton did approve, uh, to co-op cross-country with Plainview. Now, our kids would have to get there every day or we'd have to work on some type of arrangement for their training. I think it would, we'd be getting ahead of ourselves if we started talking about, you know, new uniforms and, you know, what are we going to call ourselves in that kind of business? I think we just, you know, work that out and maybe this is a one-year, one-year thing, one-year thing. And, and if, if we would happen to, uh, find a coach or hire a teacher that was interested in that, we'd probably be interested in just being, uh, you know, back, you know, by ourselves. I did reach out to Lyle Wingenfeller, a local guy, cross-country legend, uh, who can probably still outrun just about anybody. He hasn't gotten back to me yet. I wanted to hear from him today. I called him, left a message today. Get it. He's very busy, but he was intrigued by it and was going to consider it. Was going to, you know, talk with his family and see if that was something he could swing in the fall. Cross-country's a quick season, not incredibly intense in terms of training and preparation and all that other kind of business. So it's, you know, it, it might be doable for somebody who has a busy schedule compared to another primary sport, I would say. So, um, I guess that's all the information I, I, I think I have on that.
Well, you said we would have to make this decision to co-op.
July one is the NSA deadline for cooperative agreements. Uh, it, it would bump us off a class, but, uh, Randy and Robbie didn't think that would be a big concern. I mean, they were saying, you know, our kids just kind of run to compete a little bit and, and would not be concerned about, okay, now if I'm running in D, boy, I'd have been a problem displacer. But if I'm running in C, boy, that's really going to hurt me. Boy, we're not interested in that. They, they were not concerned about it, which is, which is good. Cause a lot of times that's a deciding factor on cooperative agreements is it's going to bump us up a class. We don't want to do it. Doesn't seem to be an issue. And I don't think it would be for us either. I mean, I agree that our, our runners are kind of at that same standard or same level.
How many kids do we have? How many does Creighton have?
Well, uh, we'd be looking at about, I think, three to five boys, three to six boys, three worst case, six best case. And the girls, I, I think maybe the same, three to, three or four or five, maybe one or two less. And so I, you know, when I went to a conference cross-country meet last, last couple of years, and there are seventeen teams in our conference and we had, I think, maybe just a handful of teams that actually competed for the team title because so many of them, like us, didn't have enough kids to actually run for score. They could run for individual runners, but they couldn't run and, and score as a team.
Uh, you have, because way together we would have that.
Yes.
Both boys and girls.
I believe so.
You don't have girls. So as long as four, it takes four to be a team.
Yeah. And you have, you, you don't have any, uh, uh, girl interest right now that you know of? And that, that can always change, of course, but, yeah, but we're, okay. So it's dim.
We reached out to the girls who were junior high to see if we had others to create a team that they'd be interested in. And they indicated no. So right now we have no girls. We have two boys interested at this point. They've run, we've run several years now without a team because we have not had enough for a team.
What age group are your boys? What, you know, they about that?
Those will be juniors.
So you've got a couple of years.
And I think we are anticipating three or four, I think, four freshman boys and maybe a junior boy. We hope that he stays with it. He apparently has expressed some interest in football, which would be certainly fine in his decision. But, I mean, he's, he's been a good cross-country runner for a couple of years. But, um, and of the girls, uh, I think, uh, you know, Brooklyn Cum is a good little runner at Lilly Ran and I think Abby White's going to run and, uh, so we might not get to a team with the girls. If we don't have some, you know, three or four on the other side. So, I don't know. It's just something to consider. I, um, you know, again, we could assign somebody who would do a fine job. And then I still may be overlooking somebody like an elementary principal that once ago. I mean, I, I haven't had, but there are duties to be assigned. I mean, that can.
So Kay, do you have anything you want to add that we maybe missed that Creighton just said?
Something you talked about one, we checked with NSA for the co-op. It has to be a two-year contract.
Two years.
It could be two years.
Yeah.
And you, you do not have to have a team to compete. It's an individual sport. Uh, it just gives you the opportunity to qualify, as you said, as a, as a team and team points. Like I said, we've been running without a team to at least three years that I'm aware of.
So did you have any conversation back to the golf? If you did have a girl that decided they wanted the golf, would you be willing to do that swap?
We, our girls, we've only had in the past one or two girls that have golfed and they golf in the, in the spring with the boys because there's so much happening with volleyball, possibility of volleyball, cross-country, I'm reading that adds a third sport. But in the spring, it's only up against one other sport. That's why our adolescent chile students do.
So, but right now you, volleyball's the only sport that your girl, that you have girls participating in, right? In the fall? I know there's some of these schools that have also softball and, and softball, cross-country, volleyball, girls golf. They may have, the schools that might be bigger than us, but, of course, schools our size are co-op and with about three other schools if they want softball, for example. But, I mean, talk about options, which is good, but starve sometimes maybe that's a lot. So we really kind of have two, two thoughts here. And, you know, so the golf is maybe a decision we can kind of wait another month and decide, okay, what are we going to do here? Cause honestly, uh, and, and again, you, you want to give kids opportunities, but you also, you know, are we going to spend, what, what are our expenses being to go through that schedule, pay a coach? I mean, we're talking about, you know, seven thousand dollars to offer girls golf program for whether it's one kid or whether it's, you know, maybe half a dozen or more.
We still have the option to let them golf in the spring.
Absolutely. Yes, yes. If we had a girl, if we had girls that really wanted to golf and we didn't have girls golf, but they took the golf in the spring with the boys. Which is, is not a con at all and it just.
How do you feel about how Marlena feel like that for, because she's just going to be a freshman?
She's a freshman. She's very non-committal onto a lot of things. She really enjoys golf, but it wasn't all that long ago, we were sitting in the long distance room for the summer program and there were only two kids out for cross-country and you guys had to decide whether you're going to keep that program or not. I don't, personally, I don't think it justifies the expense, even though it's my kid. I'll get her golf if she wants golf, no matter what. What, what does happen though to, like, she can't qualify for boys state, right?
Oh, no, she can.
She can?
Yeah.
I just don't know. So how does it work?
Yep, she can make the team. I got beat out by Krista Masha and Tammy White. I got beat by two girls, uh, when I played high school golf.
You're in charge of the alumni tournament too, right?
Yeah, something like that. I don't play. There's a reason for that. But yes, they, they can, they can play on the boys. They have to make, obviously, they have to make their local team and they have to be one of the top five. And so, yes, a girl can win the boys.
But they can.
Yeah.
I mean, that was my only real question.
The boys course or did they get to ski off with the girls?
They, um, what, what do they play on? They play the boys.
They run the boys.
Yeah, they got to play from the Blues or wherever.
My only other thought would be like, why, I mean, this is a cross-country question, of course, but why co-op? When we have all the, just like the conversation we had before about junior high football and stuff like that, where they were just going to come down here. They were just going to come down here when they didn't have enough to have a full team. Why aren't we not discussing that same thing now? I mean, do you really want to give them the co-op mess of, like you said, jerseys and?
But we're talking high school varsity now versus changing to high.
Right. So we can't, we can't just go join high school. Uh, uh, once you get ninth grade, NSA's got their hands in everything. And so they're just not going to let one school absorb another without saying, wait a minute, you have to have, you know, there has to be a cooperative agreement here. We have to look at your enrollments and what classification you're going to be in. So, uh, in junior high, you have that flexibility.
That can be negotiated any way we want it, right? We're not going to come up with a third sports team.
No, there's.
Eight kids, right? Or something? The cross-country team's not going to be the Badgers.
That would be between Plainview and Creighton.
Yeah, it's, but at some point that has to be decided if you're going to do that or not.
Yeah.
As long as you have a cooperative agreement, you can decide that.
The, the local districts can decide that, but.
How does it work when a kid opts, just like opts to play for another district? Can they do that? Or do they have to go to that district and play for that district?
They, they have to put their name on a May first list to transfer, to be eligible that next fall.
And the cooperative agreements solves that issue.
Yeah, yeah.
So they can't just come here and play. In junior high, it's okay, but.
Junior high, it's, yeah, junior high, it's a free.
I see.
So, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's, it's tough circumstance.
I mean, I'm interested in Marlena having golf with Mr. Knoc. Doesn't, she's not going to go out for volleyball, so the season doesn't really make a whole lot of difference. She kind of enjoys track, but, I mean, she does it because we make her in track, so.
Yeah.
If we tell her she doesn't have to run the four hundred, she'd be just as happy to play boys golf as anything.
Well, it's not like we've got thirty boys out for golf to where she's going to get lost in the shuffle.
Yeah.
The number of players he has total has time for all the players.
Is this a, you guys work in the school all day? Is this a, again, thing of numbers or the kids just don't want it?
I, I don't know. I speak for kids, but right now we are at a low enrollment in, in the high school. Uh, our strongest numbers are coming up. You know, right now we're grant, we, we've got teens and we've got mid twenties up to thirty, uh, seventh grade below. So, uh, right now it is just, it, it is a numbers thing. From my perspective, we had one of the best coaches anybody could ever find or want to run for in Coach Hanhold. And if, if kids aren't going to come out of the woodwork to run for him, and so it's a, and it, you know, and it's tough. So, but I guess it's, I, you know, can't speak for it. I guess it's just, it's mainly just a numbers thing. You just not enough kids to, to go around and do things, but.
But we face the quality. With kids that have gone out, it's not as well.
Yeah.
So I hate to.
So, yeah, I mean, and, and with, with Creighton having two boys, no girls, uh, I mean, if I've got four, three girls, you know, running them over there every day, I mean, uh, our, again, our option is to do that or for me to assign somebody to coach for the, the seven weeks that that season runs.
Did you have an idea of what, what would Creighton do if we didn't do this? Would you just cancel the programs?
No.
We're talking about. Continue to do it or just kind of cancel it?
How we can do that? Could you discuss as far as splitting salary and that kind of thing if we go together?
Discuss splitting salary. Something we did talk about is that we would probably request that you send a sponsor. So we just don't have kids on the run by themselves. That was one thing we talked about, so that would be an expense.
But once they got there, they wouldn't be in charge of doing this. They're just.
And, and that sponsor will likewise go to means to help be responsible for the money.
So if I can find a sponsor, I can probably. I, it's something to discuss and consider and, and, you know, whether, I think it's always good to talk about how we can work together and sometimes circumstances are.
Well, I don't want to let our program die because I think it's, we've been, you know, low in numbers, but like I say, I think we've been pretty good in quality. We've done good at state, we did good at beast. We always have a couple of good runners.
Yeah.
And I like to keep that enthusiasm, you know, for the upcoming kids. Cause like you said, we lost a good coach. You know, we don't want to do something else to discourage kids going out.
Which they can naturally do. If you say, hey, come up for cross-country, but we're going to put you in van, go to Creighton every day. It, it has to be absolutely necessary, I think, for the survival of the program to do something.
Give us the opportunity to field a team, you know, at least on the boys side, probably for this year. And then give us through tilt the numbers, maybe turn back the other way in the future.
It's not like football, the two years don't start. They start whenever you want them to start. They don't, you don't have to start when they, on their side.
It would start with a July one, was that?
Yeah, it would, it would start July one, yeah. I mean, uh, they, they tied it with football because they set your schedule for two years.
Well, I would, you know, say it's wait and see what your, your possibility says, but.
Sorry.
I kind of got to make a decision one way or another tonight.
Well, we.
Do we have to vote on it? We can't just do it by email?
You got a special meeting if you wanted to.
We could.
Yeah. We can, right?
Well, we have, I mean, we've got until the end of next week.
At the next week.
July first is Monday. I'm not sure if it has to be July first or prior July first. Prior to July first, but you're not going to have a, and you could have a special meeting during any time of the day, obviously, too. Noon on a Thursday, but, um, and maybe that's the best way to go. We can get the other two board members involved. Hopefully.
If something comes up between now and then, will you give us another option if, if not wanted? With girls golf, if more kids sign up before the school season starts, I mean, that's, since we're not, there's no cooperating there, right? We can just have a team or not have a team. Do we have to register with anybody to have a team?
No.
So four more sign up, we just have a team, right? I've been telling Marlena she's got to recruit.
Well.
And there were some girls that jumped shift that have golfed for three years and then all of a sudden they want to play volleyball their last year, which is fine. I mean, whatever.
Yeah.
But it just was kind of strange to have them all.
Yeah. And, and that was, again, that was just an interest meeting. So, things happen over the summer and maybe all of a sudden, hey, there's.
Show up the first day for practice rather than.
You know, but.
But you have to let a coach always got to do.
Yeah, the board will have to decide where that number is. I mean, no program, a three or less program, a four, I don't know. And that's obviously your call.
Well, it kind of depends on the numbers coming up behind. If it's a one-year thing and then you think your numbers are going to bounce back, you can keep it going. But if it's going to be a two, three, four-year thing, well, then you might drop it for a while. Well, I guess my recommendation is to put it up hold. If we decide to do something with Creighton, want to have a special meeting, if we decide we're going to get our old coach, we don't have to do it.
Probably best to find out.
Yeah.
Enter himself for two years.
I should have called him back. Maybe I left a message to get him to come in. Invite him.
That might be his way of saying, oh, now he'll say, you did what? I've got to wait another week.
His level of enthusiasm.
But I.
Unless somebody else wants to make a motion, we are all right. Postboard this.
Let's wait, just get a bid to hear back.
Okay. Okay, I want to thank you, Kay, for coming down.
I don't know. If you're not going to hurt our feelings, we're going to have a program, whether you're with us or not.
And, I mean, we appreciate the junior high football thing too. I mean, in my mind is what, I want to start doing these things, help each other out, you know, and build that relationship. It's so much easier to work the bugs out of something small like this than having to do high school football or something, you know, and build that relationship, but, but it's got to work best for more schools. So thank you for coming down. Okay, reports. Number twenty, activity director.
I did put in your folder, you know, the calendar and these log thread documentation. And I just wanted to show you, you know, Robyn and I put this together along with, uh, helping coaches, just what our kids are all doing, you know, what coaches are expecting of kids this summer. So, you know, it's not just, okay, we left weights, you know, kids out after you left weights. We put all camps, clinics, uh, all kind, all the training that coaches were scheduling and planning. Part of it was to make sure that we weren't, uh, you know, overlapping on what kids are doing because obviously they're involved in multiple activities. So just wanted to, um, share that with you. See, it gets pretty doggone busy. You know, Mr. Schmidt can, can address that too if he wants certain principals report, you know, and his, uh, working with the kids this summer because he's a big part of that. So I guess that's all I have. Mr. Reed is, has been, uh, immobile for the past few weeks. He had surgery on one ankle, he's got surgery coming on the next, right? Kells at both ankles. Right? And, uh, claims he's going to be forty pounds lighter, uh, when he comes back as well. So he said, I'm going to be amazing. His words, I will be amazing. Well, he's already amazing, so. So that's, uh, you know, all I would share with you on his behalf.
So on Thursdays, at the very bottom one, it says USA. What is USA?
Forty and wide.
Oh, it's.
That's your Americanism committee training.
Sign off somebody else. Okay, time on principals report.
Okay, so we'll go with the elementary report and I just put a couple of things in there. So first, we've made the move. Our house is box free finally, um, and everyone's settling in nicely. So we've had a great welcome. With clown days being right there, it was awesome. You know, I had a little bike gang show up at the house to pick up my son. So they could go kind of paint the town for a while. So it was very nice. This week is the last week for summer reading for elementary students. We've had twenty-nine students registered. So the twentieth will be the last day of that. And Kyle and I are, um, we ordered postcards today to send out to teachers. And we will be setting up one-on-one meetings, um, with all of the teachers, um, to just kind of get to know them and get to know the needs of our individual buildings and our district as a whole. So we should be meeting with them. We'll have a, pretty much like a two-week window in July, um, that we hope to meet with all of the teachers for just quick twenty minutes, get-to-know-you sessions. And then the last thing I have on there is that elementary's gearing up for summer school. We've got thirty-five enrolled right now. The heaviest bulk of it really, well, we've got first grade and fourth grader both at six. But everything else is a little under that. Um, but pretty good numbers for summer school.
So you split those up by grade then for summer?
Yes, yeah. So, um, I'm not quite sure where the split will be, um, but yeah.
I think it's two, three, for a teacher, you mean?
Uh huh, for summer school.
We have Mrs. Berniker's been, and Mrs. Jensen, both been teaching some sort of years and years and years. Mrs. Berniker, obviously, still deep beating the primary. Mrs. Jensen did the, the, uh, three through six. Uh, Mrs. Yelp's gonna do that.
Yes.
For us this year with all the other transitions. It didn't work for Mrs. Horstman, but it slide right into that. We have Mrs. Sowser's gonna be a new teacher, so we weren't gonna ask her to jump in and do that at that level, same with Mrs. Alexander. So Mrs. Yelp's a certified teacher, uh, been working in our elementary. She's worked with those kids. She was a parent over here, but she had been over there. So, yeah, she'll, she'll be terrific.
Nice. So then the breakdown then, with that break, it'll be twenty in your lower and fifteen.
But I just work with all the age groups at one time, in one room.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, secondary wise, Erica and I got moved in. Kids have started daycare, started moving into the office here. Last week and getting organized and getting things kind of put in place. Uh, summer school completed for the, uh, secondary. Clown days was good. Enjoyed seeing, um, all the FFA kids down there doing stuff and seeing Gail doing the mutton busting and school tours and meeting some alumni teammates in the parade. So it was awesome to see the school being involved. Had two teachers that are doing some professional development this summer. Miss Darnell and Mrs. Jacobson have been doing some stuff. And then weight room, been up here almost every day. Right now we've had thirty-one boys, high school-wise come in. We've had nineteen girls, high school-wise, and then twenty-nine junior high kids. So about seventy-nine kids we push through there in the morning. And we're consistently right at sixty-five or more every day. So, um, been a great start to the summer. Kids are doing great. So looking forward to seeing the results in the fall.
I will pass a lot of compliment to you. I've heard that you've done good things in that, for that weight room. They said it made it fun, so.
Working on it.
I guess if, if you have to get up at seven AM, which I go away.
Gotta make them smile if they gotta get up that early, right?
So I talked to a grandparent whose granddaughter is gonna be in fifth grade and they're going to school doing weightlifting and agility. Does that even, I mean?
Agility maybe, weightlifting probably not. I mean, I don't know that weight.
I know, I set it up junior high-wise. Uh, junior high-wise is just kind of learn, learn the routine. What do we want them to teach them? What do we want them to know? I don't care how much weight they put on the bar. It's just learn technique, learn our system. Then once we get in later eighth grade maybe and, uh, high school, we can start putting weight on and becoming athletes. But basically just generating that interest, getting them in here, getting them involved is the big thing for me. And below seventh grade, I don't see a point in it because, I mean, you're not gonna gain a whole lot. Your stuff developing so much.
Damage too. Okay, thank you too. President's report, um, I think since we had official meetings or unofficial meetings, a regular meeting, track, state track has been held. So I just want to congratulate all the straight, state track medalists.
Jake and Caroline, uh, each medaled multiple events and so that helped push the girls into the top ten. They were sniffing the top five, I think, for a while. I'm not exactly sure where they ended up. The boys four by one was a hundredth of a second from place that they got ninth, they placed eight. They were a hundredth of a second. So that would, and they ran their best time of the year, which you always love, you know, PR at, at Burke. Hey, so, you know, whatever it is, it is. So, uh, but it was, yeah, Jake Rickard obviously finished his stellar career for, for us. Uh, is a great runner and certainly an excellent basketball player.
Cross-country.
Cross-country.
And also Jake Lynn Fielder, congratulations.
Jake, Jake was leaving the state, yeah, drove out there and watched him play that front nine. Cold, uncomfortable, windy. Uh, and then I had, I watched it through old eleven and, you know, eating somebody, he ended up seventh, I think. Is that right? But he was leading the, leading the tournament after the front nine, you know? Yeah, playing good golf.
So congratulations to those and, and welcome to everybody who's still in town, I guess, that's gonna be here for our upcoming, upcoming year or so. Okay, superintendent's report.
Yeah, and that's, just what I would say is, is it's been exciting to have Mrs. Thompson, Mr. Schmidt, you know, get here and go to work. Cause what did their contracts start? Well, they.
We love it when somebody else send you a check.
Yes. Right now Battle Creek and North Public Schools are paying them to work here and that's, that is awesome. So these two have done, and everything, everything, right? I mean, it's, it's just a lot of enthusiasm, love to see, you know, getting to know kids. Some, we've got a couple of teachers that have moved to town already, um, you know, bought houses, rented houses, been moving to town. Mr. Klimic's been in, working with the kids a little bit as well. Um, and so that's, that's just, that's, that's exciting. One of our teachers just got married this last weekend. Uh, Mrs. Hoopman became Mrs. Miller. So our new science teacher, uh, was, got married over the summer. Paige Gatzinger may be a mother right now as far as we know. Uh, so that's exciting for a vibrant family. So hopefully, certainly, everything's going well for her right now. Um, Pipers, do we have any other staff information, big stuff like that?
Taylor's getting married here coming up.
Taylor, Taylor will be married right after school gets started. She'll, she'll be, uh, Taylor Hitts. So, uh, great stuff. Um, students are athletic, trained well underway. Uh, Mrs. Thompson talked about summer reading. A big, big information I got this last week that I sent to you was the, the Watson building is maybe back into consideration. So, uh, he pulled his staff out of there and he knew it was going to at some point in time. That happened a couple of months ago. So that building's been vacant for a couple of months and now all of a sudden it's half back, uh, compared to what we visited with it last winter. So, you know, this is not, conversation needs to happen today by any means, but maybe, uh, I don't, I don't think we ever just determine that, oh, yeah, this is a done deal. Where it's dead. It's just, okay, it's not an option. It's six hundred fifty thousand dollars, not even close. And maybe we're not even close to three hundred twenty-five. But, uh, the owner of the building, Julie Raji, well, she owns the building, but Al sent me an email. Doc Thor knows Al really well. I may, you know, maybe there's been some conversation there. I don't know. Uh, but the conversation last year, you know, Bob Evans kind of helped push us through to that to a certain degree. Hey, here are some possibilities here. Well, he's now moved on to Lawson, that's fine. Uh, we, we don't have a person necessarily to lead that if we wanted to pursue it. But, but there are options now maybe again, uh, for us to think about, talk about. You know, I had initially reached out to Creighton and Osmond to say, is this, could this be a regional learning facility for us? We had talked about, you know, the, the P two T model in West Point and the eight different schools that contribute to, uh, the, the opportunities for kids. You know, is that something that, that, that we could have here with the support of our schools just on, you know, ten, ten-plus miles on either side of us? You know, what, what, what could this be? What could this be? Uh, it's just, it's good to think about that. Could the city be involved as well? You know, has there been, talking about school-based daycare, like Ranoff has, maybe a community-based daycare, that this facility could, there, there are options there for that. So maybe, uh, a conversation for a committee of the board to, okay, let's, let's go back to the table. And what, who do we need to talk to and what do we need to talk about? Or, or not, but. At, at six hundred fifty, we were not interested and didn't need to be interested. I, I don't know that three twenty-five makes any difference, but I just wanted to get your attention on this.
Yeah, let's talk about more. We have the full board here in a moment. It'll be sold by then.
Could be. I don't know. Obviously, there's no sign up there. I don't know how they intend to go about trying to sell it. But, uh, I, I appreciate reaching out to us and I think he would maybe like to sell it to us. I think he'd like to follow through with the discussion that we had last winter, honestly. Because it would benefit him and his business if we were to have some type of auto repair, auto tech. And, and if we were to pump kids out with a level of certification, we're ready for Northeast, uh, that he could hire, you know? So he has some, it's a perfectly appropriate business being on his part. So.
We have one more time now. I mean, last time we were looking at, we're trying to get it going through this, the current school, and now it's got easier.
We had an individual that had a job opposite other places and so, uh, there's the enrollment update, vacation sick balance, that's all I have.
Hey, if nobody has anything else.
I got some. Um, you were talking about programs and I know you sent out an email or something about close-up. You don't know if we'll have anybody sponsoring that, cause this, I mean, I know it's gonna be early, but you haven't completely ruled that out.
Oh, yeah, yeah, certainly. Uh, I, I think probably, probably between Mr. Schmidt and myself, probably Mr. Schmidt, he will address the staff. And somebody may come and say, hey, okay, uh, you know, Mrs. Vick, if you don't figure out close-up, I'd be interested in doing that. That's probably what we really would, would want to have happen. But it's not something that you probably assign because it's not a school activity. So that, that'll probably be something that Mr. Schmidt will, will pursue, but it has to be done, you're right, pretty quick. Because people have to take their plans and payments. Um, so it would need to be a necessary thing early in the fall. Uh, do we have somebody that wants to pick this up?
Is there options of schools going together to do this?
Yeah, yeah.
We still have this somewhat unwritten rule about the community members not being coaches and sponsors of things, or is that?
No, we don't have that.
Couple of years ago, that was.
Yeah, you don't, schools don't, you, you want the best person for the kids and hopefully that best person is a certified staff member.
I just didn't know if that was the case. I had offered to Patty that I would help with most of it if she wanted to do it, cause I like the program.
Yeah.
Whatever you wanna do.
Okay, that's good to know, Brooke, honestly.
Open up to anybody else too. There's other people in the community that would be willing to do that, I'm sure.
It's a great program. Let's, let's, let's come back and.
Yeah, every, every student in America, that shouldn't be part of our Americanism. Every kid in America shouldn't have to visit the nation's capital. I mean, it, it's, it's good. Even to go on a tour and to see the, the monuments and memorials and visit the museums and to be on Capitol Hill, those are experiences that take your classroom education and certainly make more real.
We had a Plainview alum that got engaged and kind of watched it. Sowser boy.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
He wants to have the close-up. Okay, we are adjourned.
So you want some spoons back?
Please. If you would put your old policies, yeah, unless, unless you don't want to do it here, but I think it, what it does is it, cause sometimes you're like, yeah, I'll take it and I'll put them in when I get home. You know what will happen? So I would really prefer that you go ahead and do that over here. There'll be paper. It's the whole two series, two, two, seven nights and use, use the helmet?
I'm hoping.
So if you fold the old.